I'd like to call to order the special meeting on April 2nd, 2018. Please join Councilmember Hampton and pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, thank you for bringing us here today, Lord. I just pray for our nation. I just pray that you can unite us as we go through all these times, Lord. I just also pray, Lord, for that you'll protect us and protect those that protect us, Lord, overseas and locally, Lord, as well. I also pray, Lord, for our citizens and thank you for the trust that they've put in us, Lord, here. Just give us wisdom as we make decisions and help us to be in your will, Lord. And I just thank you, Lord, and your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. It's nice to see we're all present tonight. So let's just go on to the communications. This is a delightful one. We have one. In recognition of the 2018 lead participants for their completion of the program, Jessica Perry, Assistant to the Mayor, will present. Jessica?
Good morning, Mayor, or good evening, Mayor and Council.
You sound like the mayor.
I know. I've been spending too much time with you.
You've been around me too long, see?
Well, tonight, we would like to recognize our 2018 lead graduates. They've spent 12 weeks committed to becoming civic leaders and have dedicated their future to becoming more engaged in lead alumni engagements and volunteer opportunities with the city. So I'm going to call their name and I will ask them to join me at the podium, and then they would love to have a photo with all of Mayor and Council.
Great. As you speak, do you want them to each come up and stand here, or do you want them to go back to their seats? How do you want to handle it?
How would you like, good man?
Well, I think it'd be nice to put them front and center. Let the people see them as you call them up, okay?
Sounds good. Did you hear that, lead graduates? All right. Ray Beasley, Joyce Cashion, Patrick Cassidy, Erica Chitwood, Alan Chu, Philip Kundif, Alex DeShuck, James Doyle, Rebecca Duffany, PJ Flores, Nancy Guerin, Carl Hamilton, Ronald Hill, Kristen Holmes, Robert Holmes, Jenna Huffman, Michael Kussner, Todd Courtwright, Janine Linder, Stacy Martinez, Charles McCarlin, or McCarlin, I apologize, Joyce Mercado, Helen Mott, Jeremy Sawyer, Susan Schmelzer, John Sears, Patricia Titus, Terry Titus, Lisa Vercheren, and Kristin Zeprich. As you can see, not all of our lead graduates were able to make it tonight, but those who are, are thankful for the opportunity.
Well, I'm going to have them just stay right there because I know council wants some comments. So council, we're presenting you this very terrific class. I heard nothing but good things about them. Not that the first class wasn't good, but they just built upon that. So I'm going to start. All right. Councilman Pizzillo.
You know, I'm sorry I missed it. I was molding fine young minds at Estrella Community College while you guys were having your get-together that night. But again, you know, I'm always amazed at the people that step up in this community. And anybody who knows anything about me, I'm so proud of our residents because anytime we need something to be done, they step up and do it. And you're a perfect example of that. And I know, number one, that a lot of you we will probably see in leadership roles down the road. So again, the fact that you took your time out to learn more about how government operates, I congratulate you all. And I know this is probably just the beginning for a lot of you, so take care.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
You're going to hear this about seven more times. Thank you so much. And if there's any spouses here or significant others, thank you too for giving your significant other to the city for this class because we know it's a large time commitment and it's a lot of work. And I think Joe said it best, you know, it's great to see our citizens step up, and this is just the start of a long road and a long path for you all. And we will see you at many other events, maybe soon see you up here. We never know. So thank you, and I feel very blessed that we have citizens like you in our city. So thank you.
Councilman Stip?
I, I'm going to dispense with the joke. I was going to say I flew back from St. Louis on Thursday, and boy, were my arms tired.
So I better be retired.
Exactly. So I too miss the graduation, but I'm very thankful for everyone, you know, getting engaged and understanding how local government works. As a local government consultant, it is always amazing to me talking with other elected officials about some of their frustration about how local government actually operates, that they didn't understand when they signed up to get elected. So I appreciate you getting a little bit of information ahead of time and understand how things work. I always joke with people that you can't fight City Hall, so I, you know, decided to become a council member, and you still can't fight City Hall. But there are things we can do to make our community better, and I appreciate you stepping forward and helping us to do that. So thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, like they said, you're here a lot of thank yous. So thank you so much for participating in the lead program. I was a previous Citizens Academy graduate, so definitely a lot of good, hard work. I know I've done a lot better things, newer things. So I definitely appreciate all the hard work you put into it. And like I said, I know there's so many man-hours that our volunteers... Yeah, a lot of man-hours, a lot of our citizens put into it make our city great. It's great to have engaged and great citizens. It just makes the city so much better. So thank you so much for your time and everything you put into it. So thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
Gee, thank you. You know, actually, you're starting just where many of us have begun. And I was getting involved, and that was trying to find out more about your city. And whether or not it's for a leadership position in the future, or it's just the fact that you wanted to understand more about what happens in the city of Goodyear and where you live, and where your children may be, and where your friends are, and where your neighbors are. And you now have, you know, some of that background information that so many people don't understand. And so I'm so thankful for that, that, you know, you guys were all in the same community and you have a little more information. Now, as a leader of the city, I have to say to you, thank you, because we want people to understand their city as they get involved in committees, as then they say, hey, you know what? I've been part of this. I think I'd like to be a little more part of something. And even as I was a planning and zoning commissioner for six years during the height of our building, I thought, oh, this is all I need to do. I have four children. The way our city is being shaped is awesome. And then people started saying to me, oh, no, you need to run for city council. And I was like, why? Why would I want to do that? And then I thought about it. Well, I am a business owner. I guess I understand finance. You know, I can do this. Well, as we all know, government finances, totally different. But it was the fact that I didn't understand everything, and yet I still took the chance. And I still decided that, you know what? We all each have a different perspective that we bring to the table. And that doesn't mean it's wrong. That doesn't necessarily mean it's right. But you know what? Everybody has a unique place that they come from, and all those voices at the table is what develops an awesome place to live and to raise our children and to have our businesses. And so I'm so thankful that you guys are here and that, you know, we have other citizens that have also stepped up. So I certainly hope that you will continue on, that your thoughts about wanting to be part of something will help you decide to sign up on an application for a committee to volunteer, because we need you. We need to keep this great city of ours rolling forward, and it takes all of us doing it. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
It was a pleasure to meet all of you after graduation. It was such a fun evening, and I know it was fun to you to finally get your diploma, to say you did it. But thank you for being ambassadors on behalf of our city, and that's mainly what we hope that you will do for us, that when, as council acts on certain things, we hope that you will help us tell our story and why we do what we do. But thank you all so much. You're a wonderful group of citizens who care about Goodyear, and we thank you for that very much.
Well, you can see also you have to be long in tooth when you're on the council. So usually, we all have something to say, but it's all very meaningful. And as I said to you the other night, I really depend on you to get, to share the information that you've learned about in your conversations around a dinner party or around a coffee or wherever. And it's going to be very helpful to your city. So, and we do look forward, and we don't know what your aspirations are, so it's kind of exciting to wait till we see your name on a piece of paper or on a sign. So we wish you well, and thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause.
And Mayor and Council, would you mind taking a photo?
No, we don't. Let's just go down there in front of them. Won't that be easier? Yeah.
I think so.
All right. Bill has addressed, and we're all higher, so we'll stay up here.
Well, we'll get Wally in front, but...
Then we...
We get two layers.
Yeah, Wally, stay right there. See, this doesn't work much together with this girl.
So you stand right in the gap. Squish. Pretend like you've spent weeks together.
Squish. Squish.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, worked.
Thank you.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Are there any cards? No, Mayor. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, with that, then we'll go on to the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.4 by title only, please?
6.1, approve draft minutes from a special meeting held on March 19th, 2018. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2018-1858 approving the modification of assessments and assessment numbers 1-01-001, 5-01-001, 8-01-001, and 8-01-002 within the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2018-1866 approving a new memorandum of understanding between the city of Goodyear and the Goodyear Police Officers Association commencing on July 1st, 2018, and expiring on June 30th, 2020.
Thank you very much. Just anyone from the...
One more.
Oh, yeah, one more.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
6.4, adopt resolution number 2018-1865 approving a new memorandum of understanding between the city of Goodyear and United Goodyear Firefighters commencing on July 1st, 2018, and expiring on June 30th, 2020.
Certainly one missed that one, so thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? A question or remove it? All right, question from Councilman Pizzillo.
6.2.
On 6.2. That's Doug. All right, the improvement district?
Already know the answer, but for the general public, the only question I have, high level, what's the value to the city doing this?
The value to the city, it really holds the city harmless in that we're taking and allowing the assessment on larger parcels to be split up and matching up with the assessments that are at the county level. So at the end of the day, if there were any kind of a default, it's much easier to pursue remedies when the parcel numbers match up, the assessment parcel numbers match up with the county parcel number.
Does it also bring down the cost long-term in which the bonds we paid off quicker? Is that on here as well?
This one does not. This one has no refunding on it. This one is purely the reapportionment of the current existing assessments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Just dawned on me. Rourke, do I need to recuse myself from this?
Councilman Osborne, is your store within one of these parcels? My guess is yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So Councilman Osborne is now recusing herself from the dais on this vote due to the fact that she has a business on that land. Very good, Joanne. All right, any other? All right. Then can I have a motion and a second?
To move?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, a second for Councilman Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. Is this just on the item that Councilmember Osborne recused herself from? Because she can vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
She can vote on the rest of it. Thank you for making that clear.
But this is just for the assessment.
Yes. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Somebody want to notify Councilman Osborne?
So Mayor, do you want me to move again on the rest of the...
I'm sorry?
Would you like, I'm going to move adoption of the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay.
As stated.
All right.
Second.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, great. So we're ready to go to the business? The first item on business is consider approving to the expenditures of funds for design services for the Goodyear Fire Station. Diana Williamson, Senior Project Manager, will present it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Diana Williamson. I'm the Senior Project Manager in the Engineering Department, and I'm here along with Deputy Chief Tom Cole. And we are representatives of the Fire Department Planning Team to ask council for the approval of the expenditure of funds in the amount of $899,017 to the Dick and Fritchie Design Group for the design services of two new neighborhood fire stations. These two stations are the replacement station number 181 and the EMR Fire Station number 186. The proposed location for Fire Station 181 is north of the Goodyear Municipal Complex, near the crossroads of 143rd Avenue and Celebrate Lifeway. The proposed location for Fire Station 186 is in the southern area of the Estrella Mountain Ranch Community, near the crossroads of Rainbow Valley Road and Willis Road. Project management and the Fire Department are excited to begin the design of these fire stations. We have compiled a Fire Department Planning Team that is very enthusiastic about working in collaboration to identify concerns at existing fire stations in order to successfully construct a facility that meets or exceeds operating standards, best maintenance practices for utilization, and occupational safety and health requirements. I personally feel extremely proud to work for the city and this great and passionate Fire Department. Together, our efforts will provide the designer with recommendations during the design phase, which is anticipated to be...
Are there any questions from council? Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards? No, Mayor. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then can I have a motion and a second to approve the expenditures of the funds in the amount of $899,017 for the design services for the Goodyear Fire Station project? Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, your motion from Councilman Pizzillo, a second vice mayor. Open for council discussion. I'm going to start down this. Any discussion now?
Yeah, I had a quick question.
Councilman Hampton?
So I know we have three we're looking at. This is only for the two?
Correct.
So are we going to, well, can we take the same design and apply it to number three?
Yes, we plan on using a prototype design for a neighborhood fire station, which is typically a 12,500 square feet facility on approximately two and a half acres. These two initial fire stations are currently budgeted, in which we will utilize lessons learned and the prototype design moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, I looked at the contract, too. I think there's like five or six phases that you step through.
Correct.
Or milestones.
Yes.
Yeah, so I thought it was good. Yeah, I'm excited for the movement on these fire stations.
And so are we.
Yeah, I think the whole city is. So it'll be, I've been telling people about it often, so, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. And, yeah, thank you for taking the lead on it and looking forward to the next step of actually after design to start building. So thank you.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
And I don't know if, I had a location question for 181. You stated something, a different address than that's in the council paperwork.
The council paperwork, the car?
Yeah. Where it says project scope.
Contract.
In the contract.
There were a couple of areas that we were looking at. Currently, the final one that seems most desired is, for 181, is at the southwest corner of Celebrate Lifeway and 143rd Avenue, which is on an ADOT property, and then there's a small strip of commercial property as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure what was, we were on the same page there. No, I'm very excited.
There were a couple of sites historically before I came on that I had researched that were being looked at.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm fine with it. Great. No problems.
I guess that was my, that was my question, too, because I didn't know we had solidified the location, and so that's what I wasn't understanding.
We're trying our best to finalize those now.
So this, this contract is for design, but I would assume they wouldn't, in part of location, they're not going to be designing until they know exactly which property they're going to design.
Well, we can start the initial design on the prototype.
Okay.
Things that will fall in line, and again, the procurement and solidifying the land will happen in the early stages. So in the Phase 1 design, a lot of things can be initialized, but when it comes down to actually putting it on a...
Footprint.
Yes, then a site plan will be developed. And Rebecca, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, let's have Rebecca, zook engineering, please, address this.
And thank you, Mayor and Council. And everything that Diana has shared with you is accurate. At the time when we were working through the contract, there were a number of sites that we were looking through. We are currently negotiating on one site, which again, it can be looked at as the southwest corner of Celebration Lifeway and 143rd, or the northwest corner of Van Buren and 143rd. So it's the same site. That's the one we're looking at. Again, we're working through the negotiations at this point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Stip?
The only question that I have is just based on the experience of the, of the firm. They have experience building fire stations?
Yes, they submitted a proposal packet along with criteria that was evaluated during the SOQ process, went through the Statement of Qualifications, and they were the most, they were the highest ranking firm out of those.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a follow-up of Councilmember Hampton's. We have two this budget year, and then we have one next budget year. My question is, as we move forward and as we need additional fire stations, I'm hoping over time that whatever design we come up with is something that can be put almost any fire station that we want to go to, because you have now a prototype. So as far as redesign, recut, re-engineer, I'm hoping that's what we can be able to use for a lot of our fire stations in the future. Is that too big of a stretch?
Thank you, Councilmember Pizzillo. We would agree with you absolutely, and that is specific to the neighborhood fire station. There are two other fire station types that could potentially use this prototype to grow off of, but this is specific to the 12,000 to 12,500 square foot neighborhood fire station.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So if we approve this design for two fire stations, we're going to have to have a third one come back for us to approve that design. Is that correct? And has this firm done any design on any Goodyear fire station? I did not see it in their documents. They had a lot of experience in Colorado and with Avondale and Collison and some other folks, but they have not done ours. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, that is correct. Thank you for asking.
Okay.
They, they do have the professional architects that are familiar in the concerns that we have for our mechanical engineering, our structural engineering, and the standard, and fulfilling our standard procedures. We'll also be working with an industrial hygienist for some of those health concerns that we have at each station.
Okay. And I just, for what it's worth, I really and sincerely hope two things. One, the architects or the design team will listen to our firefighters themselves telling us what they want in there and what they don't want, so that we're not building something with a lot of useless space or really high ceilings or whatever we need. I mean, because they're the ones that are actually in there 24/7. And while I can appreciate everyone's credentials, unless you've lived in it, they don't necessarily know how it's going to work. And my second request is that the stations blend in with the neighborhood, that they do not, if possible, that they carry out some of the architectural look of the neighborhoods they're in, because we have a couple of fire stations that do not do that. And I don't know if that's a prerequisite, but especially up in the Estrella area, they've got so many different custom homes up there, and I know we don't want to hide it, but I would hope that they just take that into consideration.
I'm going to interject into that one, because that is a question that wasn't asked before when we discussed the fire stations, so...
Oh, it was.
Not to the, I'm thinking of our Public Works Building that's built like a house. You're not talking that, you're talking...
No, I'm talking about the, using brick or something, you know? Like, the one in Pebble Creek does not blend in with the Pebble Creek Renaissance look, is all I'm saying. And if it's going to be where everybody's going to see it, maybe they could just take that in. I'm not telling them how to build it, but just take it into consideration.
But you're telling them how the architect should be in it. And I want this cleared up, so, because it sounds like, what I'm hearing is that the building should be of the architectural look of the homes that are around it.
The colors.
This is a fire station, so... Can we be addressed on the exterior of this? I mean, am I, am I way off on this? Is this, I mean...
I can touch base a little bit.
Would you do that? Would you help me out on this? Because that's the impression I got from the remark, and I just want to make sure.
In regard to your first concern, the designer is very aware of our, the Fire Department's standard operating procedures that we are going to utilize in this, including a, I don't know, not adopted, quite adopted, but used as a reference of fire design guide for orientation of layout for the building.
Okay.
Also, we are focused on, you know, blending the fire station into the style of the community. So with that being said, we have also informed the architecture designer that in the architecture of it, that we are going to require, excuse me, three renditions, artistic renditions to overview and share with the public.
That's nice. That's fine. That's good.
Christopher, I know you would like to, would you come forth and just give your opinion?
Mayor, council, thank you. Just to address the question about the aesthetics, if you will, of the building, the building will be permitted through our office in conjunction with our friends in engineering and so on and so forth. It'll also be reviewed, just like every other project in the city, and has to meet the city's currently adopted, council-adopted, design standards.
Thank you.
The thing Mayor said, they do our design standards.
I just misunderstood your description of like a home, so that clears it up. Councilman Stip?
But just to be clear...
There we go.
We're building a prototype station. So they're going to have some similarities as we move from place to place and whatnot. So I think we have to have faith that you guys are going to make sure that it is cost-effective, appropriately positioned to where it's at, and go from there. But a prototype is a prototype, and I think we can get carried away.
Thank you. You had the right word, prototype. Thank you.
And thank you for that. The prototype will, will mainly be for the interior and the shell of the building, but there will be things that we will be considering in early design, like the orientation, the ingress, the egress, and then obviously the aesthetic, uh, view of, of the building and, and where it's placed, which community, or, or the one north of the complex, municipal complex.
Okay, thanks.
Well, all in all, we're excited to get that started, so, and I know the public is, so that's, that's positive. All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So let's go to 7.2 on business. Thank you very much. Consider, um, adopting ordinance number 2018-1382 to amend Chapter Two of the City Code. So Darcy McCracken, city clerk, will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you two is to update the City Code to clarify who would be the acting mayor if both the mayor and the vice mayor are not available. In the past, council has had to plan far enough ahead so that council could meet to designate the acting mayor. In some cases, this required a special meeting, and most recently, we anticipated both the mayor and vice mayor being out of the state, yet we were not able to achieve a quorum of members for a special meeting to designate an acting mayor. This code change would designate the council member with the most seniority, who is available, but it is just until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. And this change still gives the mayor and council the ability to designate someone as long as staff has enough notice to get it on the agenda. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Hey, thank you very much. All right, could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion, Councilwoman Stiff, and a...
I still need to read the ordinance.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay, I'm, I'm doing it all from here.
All right, I'm sorry. Will the city clerk please read an ordinance? See, you're in the wrong place. City clerk, please read ordinance number 2018-1382 by Tataloni.
Adopt ordinance number 2018-1382, amending Chapter Two of the Goodyear City Code by amending and replacing subsection 2-2-3, acting mayor, providing for corrections, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Stiff, and a second from Councilwoman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Stiff?
A similar ordinance came before us a number of years ago, and I raised the issue of the concern that perhaps the senior person isn't always the best person. And everyone agreed, and we, we opted not to do that. I think the changes that are made to the, uh, the suggestion on this particular ordinance, which uh, allows this to happen in that fashion, and then the council to make a change later, lets us take care of that inevitability, or deal with that situation if it were to occur, that we perhaps did not want the senior person to be the acting mayor. So this resolves that conflict in my mind, at least from me, so. Um, I appreciate staff's work on it, because I know that this can be kind of troubling for us, so thank you.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was.
Any other comments? From the mayor, thank you. Well, we haven't voted on it yet. Yes, Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Hundred percent in agreement.
Good, thank you.
Guess you got that message. Um, well, my discussion is, I can't thank you enough. I haven't voted on it now, but it has been a problem for me to take time off, and, um, it makes it very confusing, so if I'm, so I won't say anymore. Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor. It has to be a roll call vote. Sorry, I've got it right here.
It's an ordinance.
Boy, this, we should start all over on this. I should go out and come back in. All right, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, thank heavens, it ended up the same way in the second time around. All right, this time, council, comments, accommodations, everything you've gone to,'d like to talk about?
Can I start?
Yeah, Councilman.
Okay, so first of all, I have to tell you, Building Blocks was wonderful this year. Thank you, Jessica, for all the help that you gave, and to all the departments that came out and spoke to, um, all the principals and superintendents and SROs, everyone that was there. That was a, an outstanding event. Um, and especially to Chief Guyer and his SRO officers. This was a unique, um, Building Blocks this year. It was our ninth year, and, uh, this is when all of the superintendents and principals of every school in Goodyear is invited. But this year, it was special because of, at the ending, we were having the convening, um, topic, or I should say, the, the, um, communication was about school safety. And outstandingly, our chief and our SROs also decided that, you know what, these school districts flank our other cities. And, um, our superintendents had thought, why not invite the SROs from the other cities? So an SRO from Avondale came, and SRO from Buckeye came. Then I invited council members from Avondale, Litchfield Park, and Buckeye, because we all are in this together, and it was a great conversation about safety of our children. And, um, and I thought that went very well. And so I really appreciate, uh, Chief letting the SROs about that. I also, uh, attended an event for, um, Senator John McCain as a, a lifetime service award from the State Society of Arizona. But tonight is actually, um, a very, a very, um, bittersweet night, and I will do this the best I can because I love this city, but more importantly, I love people, and I love this state. I've thought long and hard about the responsibilities we take as elected officials, as leaders. We recognize where there is work to be done, and I'm very proud of all the accomplishments we have done together for this city. You guys are a great team. You're a great staff. We've done very well. But as a leader, I'm ready to take the step to not only continue to help Goodyear, but to help our region the best I can, and that is why I will be running as a state representative for Legislative District 13. As I mentioned, I take great responsibility and believe that one of the most important jobs we do as council members is to form our city's budget. So with that in mind, my final day on this council will be May 21st, after we have the vote on the tentative budget. And as I said, this is bittersweet. After 11 years, this really is kind of a, a life-changing decision for me. But I look forward to helping us all, and being a granddaughter of the great state of Arizona, I'm ready for this challenge.
Thank you very much. Uh, do you want to clap? Do you want to talk? What do you want to say? I mean, that's kind of one of those announce... That's kind of one of those announcements. It takes a little bit more. So why don't you, uh, I think we'll save it for your last meeting.
Yeah.
You know how we feel, and we appreciate all your contributions to the city, both on the committees and, you know, on planning and zoning and on council. And you were a vice mayor, and you have a lot, so we'll, at that last meeting, we'll, um, have lots to say, won't we?
We sure will.
Yeah.
Just be sure it's on the agenda.
Yes. Be sure it's on the agenda.
You guys have work to do, so I figured I better tell you when I'm gonna go.
Well, that's great. So who else would like to talk next? Councilwoman Lortano?
Uh, first of all, I won't be here on the 21st, so I will give my remarks. Not now, but as it gets closer, so. Um, I, I, just a couple of things. I, obviously, we're all over the lead graduation, and that was absolutely wonderful, and I was so impressed with the caliber of, of people that are coming forward and everything. Um, and then also several of us attended the event at the ballpark, which was the, and I'm gonna screw up the name, the Muscle Kings Car Show and Concert. And it was a lot of fun. I, I think the mayor was in the mosh pit. But I, I thought it was very well done. Um, you know, so Bruce, Na- Nathan, just Fire PD, everybody did a great job with the crowds, and it seemed like it was pretty well-attended, and I, I think the next one I pass will be for Joe ACDC, so could we work on that for him?
Thanks.
So, great, great job. Yes, Brandon?
Yeah, so also I attended the lead graduation, so a great time to celebrate with our, our recent graduates. And then, um, also went to the Good Friday event as well, just like 1,100 people there, so it was a great, a great, a great event to, uh, to celebrate that Easter Passover weekend. And then, um, yeah, I also attended the Muscle Kings Car Classic Show, so I thought that was a great event. It's the first time they've had it here. But I'm looking forward to maybe having some more, more, hopefully it went well in the attendance numbers, but it'd be great to have some more concerts like that in Goodyear. It was great to hear the, the lead singer from one of the bands say, "All right, Goodyear, you ready to rock?" So, yeah. So it was good to see, it was good to hear the, our name being put out there as a destination for, for concerts and entertainment, so. So who knows, maybe we'll have, maybe we'll be the destination of 80's rock bands, but that's fine, that's fine. We could be the start of that, so. But it's good. It was a great, great, it was great, it was great. I enjoyed it.
You just tell us you missed it.
I'm, I was there, I was there.
No, you missed the 80's.
I was in there. But yeah, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Pizzillo?
I still think the mayor was in the mosh pit, but we'll talk about that later. Uh, you know, this is one of the things that I had talked about, I guess, you know, um, and Nathan, I, I really think they did a top-notch job. Uh, when Glendale does it every once in a while on their, you know, the outside of the ballpark, they have, uh, promotions, chili cook-offs, chili fest. Then they'd have a stage, and then they have a band there, reasonably priced, like this was, and draws quite a few crowd. I think I had heard, uh, maybe Bruce said it was like 3,500 or somewhere around in that vicinity of higher, higher? And, and again, you know, I got a feeling from the success they had, we're gonna have more of those, and, and I like that, because it brought everybody in the community out. Uh, and again, I don't want to date myself, but I did see, see one of them live in concert when they were at their, at their, uh, height, so, uh, and it was really, they did a great job, even for the acoustics, for an open ball field, sound was good. You know, usually you gotta get it enclosed, you gotta have the right acoustics, but the people they had on the mixers and whatever did a good job of keeping that sound, so, uh, again, thank the, uh, ball team, thank, uh, everybody there at the ballpark. They did a great job.
Councilwoman Stiff?
I thought you were gonna say you were just a kid when they were born, but... The, uh, this, uh, this is my last meeting until, and I don't think we're meeting in, on April 30th.
You're not quitting, are you?
No. So...
Just checking.
It's at May 7th, I think.
My tissue?
Yeah, I, I leave on Wednesday. I don't come back until the 29th. Um, but as I mentioned during the budget process, during the budget workshop that we have, um, this is the most critical time that we have as a city council, and while my work will take me away, uh, my responsibilities, uh, will still be fulfilled, and I'll be working, uh, very closely with, uh, with the city manager and the staff to get my questions answered, to get my, uh, my concerns brought forward. So I want to reassure anyone who doesn't see me here now for the next three or four weeks, that, uh, that I am still doing. The chief uncle has not left the building, as, uh, Sherry likes to say, um, that I'll still be out there chipping away at, at every dollar that, that we're looking at, so just wanted to reassure everybody, and...
All right.
And, uh, we'll see you in May.
Thank you. Ollie?
Okay. I had to pull up my calendar, because I really forgot what all I did this past week. Um, I did attend the Building Blocks for schools, and it was very interesting, as it always is. Um, I flew to Salt Lake and went to the Water Now Alliance, which, uh, I was able to be on a panel with, uh, water folks from Washington, Oregon, Nevada, California, Nebraska, and one other state. And it was really very interesting, because they were sharing best practices on how they, uh, did, uh, water rate, raising water rates, how they did, uh, community involvement, how they notified the public on anything that their, uh, water departments were doing. And really, they just talked about, um, uh, best practices, and that was really terribly interesting to me, and I flew back in time the next morning to preside at the MAG human services and community meeting, uh, because Michelle had lost her voice. So as her vice chair, I did that. And then, um, I went to the, uh, West Valley Good Friday breakfast, did not eat, because I was trying to hurry to meet the mayor, and she'll talk about the next event.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Um, and appreciate the water. I can't believe that we weren't kind of on the top of the list on that, as far as our water department. I didn't hear that.
Mark Combs was there.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, we were on the top of the list. That's why we went.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure you said that, so. All right, my week was a little busy. On Tuesday, I attended partially your Building Blocks, and I have to tell you, Juan, you did a great job. Um, the, the number of people that were there this time was outstanding, and how interested they were. I really appreciate that. And, and I have to tell you, we're gonna miss that. We're gonna miss you on that, because you, you built that up. So I was off to, uh, the state of address at Talleson, um, and also then to the Peoria, uh, city address, state of the city address, and what we try to do is, as far as the mayors go, we meet once a month for breakfast and once a month for dinner. Um, so we try to attend each other's event, find out where the cities are, so that's a real goal for all of us. And then I attended, uh, Australia Mountain College Advisory Council. I attended the MAG Regional, and again, that evening, a mayor's dinner. Uh, also, the GPEX mayors and supervisors council quarterly. Um, the other thing, and I, did anybody else attend, uh, the Cox Smart Home? The Connected Independence? Oh. Well, somehow we need to get another demonstration for you. It was amazing how independent one can be if they're a shut-in, um, or just for your daily life. Uh, the different areas that we saw, from the kitchen to the bathroom, to the bedroom, to the living room, to the... It was really interesting. So if you get a chance to go to Cox Smart Home, have it. They, they rented a building, uh, I don't know, I guess Jessica could tell where it was. Um, and, and so they set it up in an apartment, and so they had them in each of the rooms, the different, when it, it was, it was just outstanding. And of course, then I came home, and, uh, for the lead graduation, I learned, the lead graduation, and I learned a great deal about the people that were there. And I can't thank you again for, for contributing your time and effort into this. And then, of course, everybody attended the Good Friday. I could only stay, uh, for 30 minutes to talk to people, and I was off to the Rio Salada Launch Event, um, which is a project from Senator McCain. It's his legacy project, and it involves, um, the Rio Salada from Tempe on the river, all the way to Buckeye, through Goodyear to Buckeye. So we will be working in partnership with the cities, and our El Rio that we're doing will be connected to that. So the outcome of that will be, um, some, it will be some river, and then it may be dry, and it'll be walking and different events, and then water will continue again, so. Of course, it's just at a very early stage, so just be looking out for that. And then, of course, the car show. It was fantastic. And the, I, I, Ron didn't really want to go to the concert, but we went, and he ended up enjoying it, and I ended up enjoying it, and we sat down where the people were. You were all up there. We were where the action was.
Where is the mosh pit?
So, I was in the pit. So anyway, it was great, and staff, terrific job, so. I'm gonna turn it over to the manager. If you have anything to report?
I do, thank you, Mayor and Council. So let me first report on the Muscle Kings Car Show and Concert. Uh, the grand number was 5,000 attendees.
5,000?
That I received, and, uh, staff received positive feedback from the show promoter, car show participants, and attendees of the concert. So I do believe it was a good experience for all. I also wanted to report on the household, the residential household hazardous waste event, which also took place last Saturday. And it took place in Avondale for the residents of Avondale, Goodyear, and Talleson. They had 478 vehicles go through the line. 339 of those were Goodyear residents. The citizen comments on this event was a good job, and, and thank you for the event. Um, the traffic issues, there was a 30 to 45 minute wait times at times, but overall, very good event for our residents. A couple of events we have coming up this week. We have the volunteer appreciation event scheduled for Wednesday, April 4th, from 5 to 8 at Pebble Creek. We have the fourth open house for the recreation campus, scheduled for Thursday, April 5th, from 5 to 7 at the Goodyear Library Community Room. During this meeting, the public will be presented with the final concept for consideration. And for more information, to join the mailing list, to provide input, not only can you come in person, but you can also visit the project website at goodyearaz.gov backslash rec campus. And then last but not least, we have another music event this upcoming weekend, uh, the Goodyear Arts and Culture Commission and the West Valley Arts Council on Saturday, April 7th, from 12 to 9 p.m. at the Lakeside AmpliTheater in Estrella. It's the Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest. It's the Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest. Non-stop music from 12 bands on two stages. It will have a Kid Zone, local food trucks, Goodyear Mobile Museum, and a Beer and Wine Garden. Note to bring a blanket or lawn chair to enjoy the music, view, and gorgeous weather. Thank you.
Sounds like a fun night. Is there any staff summary follow-up action required tonight? I don't think so, okay. Does, Council, you have any inquiries of staff this evening? Anything you want to put on a future agenda? Okay, the next meeting will be April 16th, it'll be a work session at 4, a special meeting following that, so this meeting is adjourned.